All right, it's seven oh four. Let's go ahead and get started.
Liz, next line.
So, good evening, everyone. It is July ninth, twenty twenty five. This is a regular town meeting for Cottage City. We'll start off with our roll call. Starting with Ward one, Commissioner Salsick.
Ward one, Salsick, present.
Ward two, Henderson, present.
Ward three, Wheatley, present. Gibbons is absent. Ward four.
At-large, Brooks, present.
Thank you. We have four commissioners tonight. We do have a quorum. Next, we will start with our pledge of allegiance. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could not hear you guys in the room.
Can you hear us?
We can hear you now when you're talking to Mike.
We probably just didn't have the mic on for it.
Mm-hmm. So, next up. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Are there any changes? Is everyone okay with the agenda for tonight?
I'm okay with the agenda.
Brooks, no changes.
No changes, okay.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so let's move along. So, we have the approval of the June minutes. It just says work session, regular town meeting, special call meeting, does not have the dates. But they were in June. Can we make sure we correct that for next month, please?
We sure can, and I can give you the dates. It was Tuesday, June the third, work session. It was the Wednesday, June eleventh, a regular town meeting. And it was a special meeting that was called on June the nineteenth of twenty twenty five.
Okay, did anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? I did have some edits that I sent in earlier today. Hopefully, they were made.
Brooks, no comments on the minutes. Thank you.
Henderson, no comment.
No comment from Salsick.
Okay, thanks. Mister Hosen, would it edits made?
Yes, we will be making those changes to the minutes, and then we will make sure that that gets put into the record when we go ahead and post them to the website. When you, after you vote on them tonight.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to look at the financials? Any questions for the treasurer?
Brooks, no questions or comments or concerns on the financials. Thank you.
Henderson, no comment.
Julia, any comments, questions? Did we lose Julia?
Let me check.
Oh, she's muted.
Sorry, I got disconnected.
That's okay. Did you have any questions on the financials?
It's spratty.
Did you say no?
Yeah, I said, sorry, I said, no, no questions.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry. So, um. Since there's no questions on the minutes, on the financials, is there a motion to approve the June minutes and the June financials?
Brooks, I make a motion to approve the June finance and meeting minutes.
Thanks, is there a second?
Henderson, second.
Thank you, call for the vote. We'll start with Ward one.
Uh, Ward one, Salsick, aye.
Ward two, Henderson, aye.
Ward three, Wheatley, aye. Ward four, Gibbons is absent.
At-large, Brooks, aye.
Motion passes. Next up is our public safety report.
We can give you that. Within the public safety report, we do have the calls for service that were handled by the Cottage City Police Department for the month of June, of course, the previous month. And it looks like they took a total of ninety-nine calls. So, they're listed there. Also, they participated in the benefits meeting that we had here in Town Hall on June the fifth. They also helped out with Brentwood Day on June the seventh. And they have several events. They supported the Bladensburg fireworks on July the second. And there was a training that was held down in Ocean City during the MML Summer Conference. And of course, Sergeant Hayes attended that training.
Any questions regarding the public safety report?
Brooks, no questions.
Henderson, no questions.
Uh, no questions.
No questions for me. Thank you, everyone. Next is Public Works Report.
Very well. Jorge Montiel, our new skilled Public Works laborer, has been doing an excellent job. I've noticed today, he has been doing a lot of the pruning around the Public Works building, making sure that the flowers are watered along Bladensburg Road. Really, you know, putting a lot of effort into sprucing up the town, and I think a lot of our residents and our commission are seeing a big difference on the streets of Cottage City. And we're really happy to have him on board, and I think he's really fitting in well with the team. And we're just happy to have him here, so I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works?
Brooks, no comments or questions.
Henderson would just like to just, just say, I've seen him out there working diligently, and I think he's doing a wonderful job. Back and then I just really want to compliment him right behind John. Back, back to you.
Thank you. Julia, any comments or questions?
Uh, no, I agree with Commissioner Henderson and, and John. I think he's doing a great job, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. I have no questions or comments. I just echo what everyone said tonight. He's doing an awesome job. Next up is the commissioners' reports. We'll start with Ward one, Julia. Anything to report out?
Uh, Ward one, no, I don't have anything to report out. I did have somebody who gave me a question with regards to if we are using Roundup at all when we do any type of spraying or anything like that. Does anybody know if we utilize that or not?
We do not use Roundup in any of our public works areas.
Okay, perfect.
We use an organic, from what I understand, it was an organic weed killer that we use, but it is not anything close to Roundup.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks. Ward two, Commissioner Renee.
Yes, uh, I, I would just was wondering about those, the trash cans. I know we mentioned that they would, someone would repair it, like, I think Commissioner Gibbons said that Jorge would, could probably assist in repairing them, but right now, I know he's pretty busy out there doing what he's doing, and he's doing a wonderful job. And I think, John, I think you mentioned that we could down three-one-one, or was it three-one-one?
Yes.
To report the issue.
Yes, definitely.
And and there may be a forty, forty day waiting period for replacement of the bins.
Yes.
It was noted that the Jetta trucking would come out to assess the need and repair for the bins, right?
Right. That's for the recycling.
But, uh,
and Bates.
We, and I think you said you was gonna reach out to them? Did you?
Yes, and I know that they are working to try to get that done expeditiously. And I've been, as residents have phoned us and have reported issues with their trash and receptacle, we've been, you know, helping them to assist them with getting that done. So, that is something we are definitely taking very seriously. When people call in and say that receptacle is not working, we get in touch with our providers to let them know, and then, of course, we also help them with the three-one-one system, making sure that the county is well aware.
Thank you, John.
You're very welcome.
Uh, one more thing was because we're kind of short on at this time, probably with, you know, checking on the codes around in Cottage City, I was wondering maybe we could maybe put something in the newsletter to make, you know, to have the residents be aware of, you know, try to, you know, don't fill up their porches
Yes.
with a lot of debris.
We definitely will, can do that.
Because I noticed that it's beginning to pile up, or the thing is about cars up on the jacks and things like that.
Yes, maybe next month, we could do a code dos and don'ts, maybe that'll try to, you know, educate the public a little bit better about, you know, no open storage. You know, make sure that, because we've noticed also the cutting of grass.
Yes.
People have not been maintaining their lawns like they used to. We've noticed a lot of different things. So, I think it would be behoove us to go through and to address some of those issues that are happening in hopes that we can educate the public and hopefully we can fix some of these code problems that we're having.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. I yield back.
Thanks. I do have a question. I remember we had talked about the permits being handed out to the residents during to identify when they're coming through town during rush hour. And I, I believe those permits are in. If you are not speaking, please mute yourself. I believe those permits are incorrect.
That is correct, and we have been handing them out. We've had residents come through. We get like maybe two, three people a day. And we, of course, I'll put it back out on Constant Contact again, as well as our social media. And what we do is when you come in to get it, of course, we ask for you for your copy of your license and your registration so that we can link those items to the sticker. So, we know exactly that they are a Cottage City resident, and then we have all the data, you know, stored, and we're, we're meeting that, making sure that we're, we're doing our due diligence when it comes to those. And hopefully, we'll be continuing and keeping up with our traffic detail. I know that with the, some of the changes that we're currently making, but we will hopefully get back on that, and we can make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, but that was not my question. My question is, we had stated we would put it in the newsletter, and I didn't see it in the July newsletter.
My apologies, that might have been just an overlook. I'm very sorry about that.
Because everyone's not on Constant Contact or social media. So, we need to make sure it's in the newsletter, please.
Yes, it'll be in the August edition. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward four, Commissioner Gibbons again is absent, so we'll go next to at-large Commissioner John Brooks.
Yes, for the interest of time and getting my feet to a drier place quicker, I'm gonna yield my time back, so, thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Old Business, and this is for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five. And it's a mid-year budget amendment. I do have a question about that fifty-nine thousand dollars. So, is Todd on the line?
He is. I'll go ahead and read it into the record, and then we can do the discussion. Town of Cottage City Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five, mid-year budget amendments, a resolution concerning the Cottage City Budget Amendments for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Todd, are you there?
Yep, I'm listening.
Okay, hi, Todd.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I have a quick question. On that fifty-nine thousand, it's an expense for one thousand one hundred six dollars and ninety-seven cents, and it says Danton and Sons. What is that?
Um, I'm not certain offhand. Let me look at the reports.
Maybe, Mister Hosen, do you know what that expenses?
That was some garden expenses that were turned in from Danton and Sons.
For the garden club?
That's correct. Garden expenses, if I'm remembering correctly.
Is that from the twenty-five thousand?
I believe it was, yes.
Because when we talked about this last time, we were told that the garden was in this twenty, this fifty-nine thousand dollars. And that's the only thing that I see that is related to the garden.
Yeah, and to clarify, the garden was never in this fifty-nine thousand. Most of it's Bates, chalk riot, a cat's life. And then there was a police storage container, but yeah, no, the garden was never here.
Okay, so, Mister Hosen, are you clear on that? Because I think
Yes, I am. Thank you.
You, you had told us that it was, it was in there somewhere. So, this is the breakdown of the fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Correct, correct. And that, you know, that thousand that we just talked about with the garden, that is eligible to use ARPA for because it was spent before twelve thirty-one. All of our conversations were about what do we do about the garden funding after twelve thirty-one, but that thousand dollars is okay to be charged against ARPA for that period because we spent it and paid for it before the end of the calendar.
Okay, good. So, with this amendment, it says seventy-nine thousand? Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's, there's two lines to it. There's the fifty-nine that we spent around year end for Bates, chalk riot, et cetera. And then, in addition to that, the twenty thousand for the residency program. The total, the budget resolution is seventy-nine.
But Todd, I also thought, didn't we have to do something to fix the garden? Because remember, there was the issue where they did not have the funds to cover the garden?
Yep, yep. No, we're fine. We have enough appropriation in general government that we can absorb that additional garden spending.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna put it in this amendment?
Correct, correct. We'll get the rest of it in twenty-six's budget amendment, but for twenty-five, we've already appropriated enough funding to cover that expense.
John, have you talked to the garden?
I have not, but I will.
Yeah, I don't think they're aware of that because they're, they're spending money now.
That's correct.
So, what are we doing in that case?
Well, that'll be, you know, they're spending it now. We'll run it through twenty-six's budget. This is, this amendment is for twenty-five's budget.
But they're spending in twenty-five.
Yeah, they just spent some stuff in twenty-five because they thought they had the money.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't understand how you're gonna move it to twenty-six if they're
Oh, okay. So, if they spent in twenty-six and present in twenty-five, sorry, if they spent in twenty-five and present for reimbursement, as long as it's not more than five thousand dollars, there's plenty of appropriation there to absorb it. And then the remainder of what we talked about last meeting will appropriate for them in fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they have enough money to cover this year, twenty-five. Because I know they're making purchases. I think they're planning on fixing the fence. And I think they were talking about buying some additional bids and some other stuff. So, that may be well over five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I mean, if they don't buy it till now, now we're in twenty-six, so we'll get it in the next budget.
You said we're in budget twenty-six?
Correct. Yep, seven-one, we started the twenty-six budget. So, anything that they buy July first and after gets tagged to the twenty-six budget.
So, this amendment is for last year's budget?
Correct. This is for the twenty-five budget.
I just want to make sure the garden understands what's going on. Does anyone have any other questions in regards to this budget amendment? We'll start with Ward one.
Uh, no questions.
Okay, Ward two.
Ward two, Henderson, no comment, no questions.
Thank you. I haven't asked my questions. Commissioner Gibbons again is absent. At-large, Brooks, any questions?
At-large, Brooks, no questions. Thank you.
Anything else we need to do other than vote on the amendment? Did you shake your head?
Yeah, no, just looking for a vote so that we can update the budget finalized twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment? For seventy-nine thousand?
Uh, Brooks, I make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, mid-year budget amendments. Is that correct?
Henderson, second.
Okay, let's go around, starting with Ward one. Julia, your vote?
Uh, Ward one, Salsick, aye.
Ward two, Henderson, aye.
Ward three, aye. Ward four is absent.
At-large, Brooks, aye.
Motion passes. I'm sorry. Next is tree trimming or removal.
Yes, this is the tree that we talked about last week that's right next door to Town Hall. We, you, we put it out there, and we said we were gonna come back this week and, of course, make the decision whether you wanted to have the tree removed or if you wanted to prune the tree, and of course, we do need a vote for this. And I did look at the tree again, and the tree does lean. So, I will leave it open to discussion as to how you want to proceed. Of course, if we do take the tree out, another tree will be planted. That will be something we definitely will do, being good stewards of the land.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we can go ahead and take the vote.
Madam Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Yes.
Brooks, I make a motion that we move forward with removal of the tree, pay for it with the CB Trust grant, and then in its place, work with the green team to plant one, possibly two new trees in its place.
You have to say the dollar amount?
Making an amendment to my motion in the dollar amount of one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Henderson, second.
Thanks. Call for the vote, Ward one.
Uh, Ward one, Salsick, aye.
Ward two, Henderson, aye.
Ward three, Wheatley, aye. Gibbons is absent. Ward four.
At-large, Brooks, aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the MML Fall Conference.
Yes, we have, as we know, the MML Fall Conference is going to take place in October over at Whisper Resort over in Deep Creek area of Maryland. And we have rooms available for everyone, all commissioners. But we'd like to go ahead and firm up tonight as to who will be attending so that we can go ahead and lock in reservations and registrations and all that. So, I leave it to you all for discussion and a vote.
Did you talk to Todd about the funds?
I haven't, haven't had a chance to. I'm, my apologies.
Todd, how much do we have in that training for the commissioners?
For twenty-six?
Yes.
I'm pulling up the budget.
Could I ask a real quick question of John?
Sure.
While Todd's pulling that up, do you have an idea of what it costs? We only sent four commissioners to MML, the summer conference. Do you have an idea of what it costs to send those four? Because we have to account for that as it's part of the FY twenty-six budget.
I sent you all information today. I would have to get you
Hold on, hold on. This summer conference would have been in twenty-five.
No, no, the next one we have to
Oh, the upcoming one?
Yeah.
That would be
Like, when we look at the full budget, we have to look at fall conference and the next summer conference.
It would be this, with October Fall Conference.
Right.
And of course, we, yeah.
The May, or the June.
June, right.
So, it would be So, we have to look at both of those conferences and who's gonna attend. That's why I was curious. We had a general idea of what it costs for this summer, so we could account for how many people could go to the fall one and
No, no, I understand.
I think
Oh, has it?
Budget for five commissioners for the summer, even if five don't attend.
And the, the total budget line was fourteen thousand seven hundred.
Fourteen thousand seven hundred is in the current budget for this year, and that would have to cover the fall and summer con, and the upcoming summer conference.
Correct.
June of next year.
Could I ask a question of Todd?
Sure.
Todd, do you happen to know what it was last year? Because last year, we had sent three commissioners to the Fall Conference, and I think four of them to the Summer Conference. So, that would be a pretty good guide of how much we spent last year and how much we could.
Yeah, it looks like if we sent four, it looks to be about two grand in the fall. And then for the summer, it was about eight.
Yeah, the Fall Conference doesn't cost as much as the Summer Conference because it's a shorter conference. It's not as many days.
Those numbers sound right, because I remember Todd, we asked Todd the same question last year about, you know, whether three of us could attend a Fall Conference, and we, there was a pretty sufficient amount of budget left in the training.
So, if it was two thousand for last year. So if it was two thousand for last year and eight thousand, that's ten thousand. That would give us a cushion of about four thousand, three to four thousand. Depending on inflation and stuff like that, so. I think we have enough to go to both conferences. And probably what we should do in the future, depending on whoever is sitting in these seats. Just make sure there's enough funding for both conferences. For all five commissioners to attend, whether they attend or not. Just give us, give um, enough cushion in that budget line. So that people who wish to attend can attend and you can always, if they don't, put the money back in the general fund. For future reference. So I know, um, Commissioner Brooks, you wanted to go to the Fall Conference since you missed the Summer Conference.
Yes, that is correct.
Commissioner Henderson, and you said you would like to.
Yes.
And a sausage, you said you would like to attend as well. Um, Commissioner Given said he was not planning to attend. I said I would like to attend, so that's four of the five who would like to attend. And Mr. Holson, did you say you were going as well?
I would like to attend, but if not, I understand.
Well, you, I believe your training comes from a different fund. It's not, your training doesn't come out of the commissioner's training.
Okay, that's good to know.
So that would be four commissioners and one staff member. You may want to see if um, Elizabeth would like to attend.
Okay, I can do that.
And again, her training is a different budget line item.
That's correct.
Does the uh, does the chief go to the Fall Conference? Do chiefs go to the Fall Conference?
No, they mostly go to the summer, cause they have their chiefs meeting down there.
I was just curious, thank you.
So you need us to vote on how many commissioners are going to attend?
Well, I just need to know who was going to attend, and I thought a vote would be good because we are taking money out of the budget and I thought it would be a good idea. But if not, I understand. If you just wanna, just, I know the names were good.
Yeah, usually we do a consensus on that.
Good to know, thank you so much.
So next is new business.
Yes, so I'm happy to bring forth tonight the uh, contract. So we can get our forty-third Avenue Stormwater Maintenance Project off the ground. Um, as you know, on June the nineteenth, you awarded the contract to um, SFMS. A company located out of, if I'm not mistaken, I think they're out of Bethesda, Maryland. Um, and I've done my due diligence, um, and I did uh, reach out. If you look on the website, it did say they were unfortunately not in good standing. Um, but I did reach out to the state and I was able to provide you all tonight a um, good standing certificate. From um, the SFMS LLC. Um, so I did do my due diligence and checked on the references and all. I also um, provided this information to CPJ, the engineers. Um, I asked them if there was anything that we should be concerned about before we put forth this contract this evening. Um, they have come back and stated that everything looks in order. Uh, there should be no problem to approve the contract as is. Um, and the grand total for the contract, of course, would be three hundred and four thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, and hopefully you guys can approve it so that we can go ahead and get our pre-construction planning meeting off the ground. Um, and then after that, of course, we will get them started. Um, as we all know, this project has to be completed before September the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. Which is something I have planned to do and stay on top of, so we can make sure we don't lose our grant money. So I yield to you all to hopefully um, go forth and vote on this, thank you.
I just wanna make sure I heard the number right. You said three hundred, four thousand and one hundred dollars?
That's correct. It's three hundred and four thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents. Is the total amount. And I did speak, when I spoke to the engineers today, um, and I asked those questions, they did say they were very conservative. Um, and they do think that the, some of the costs should come in lower, um, than what they had put on the bid sheet. So um, we do think that it's gonna be fine to approve it at the three hundred and four thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents.
So did you say that they were not in good standing or they were in good standing?
Okay, they are in good standing, cause I, when I first went and looked at the website, which you check out the state of Maryland, it says they're not in good standing. But I reached out to the entity, I also reached out to the comptroller's office, and I did my due diligence. And I was able to get from them, as well as I verified with the comptroller's office. I got a good standing certificate from them stating that they are in good standing. So we are fine. Everything is a go. I did check references as you asked me to do. Um, they have good references and I think we would have no trouble working with this company.
Okay, I, I'm sorry if I'm asking the same question again. When you said you checked the website, what website did you check? Which one?
State of Maryland's website, when you go to check business entities to see if they are in good standing or not. There's a website you can go to within the state of Maryland that will show you.
I just wanted to know the website you were talking about, cause you never said. So you're talking about the state of Maryland website?
That's correct.
Said that they were not in good standing.
They at first were not in good standing. If you look on their website right now, it's saying that they're not in good standing. From what I understand, there's a backlog. In the comptroller's office. And so I was able to go and do my research and found out that they are in good standing. They have the certificate that was issued in April. And the certificate.
They just haven't updated the website.
That is correct.
Gotcha. And that's what's in front of us now.
That is correct.
Okay, I, I think we discussed this contract already, right?
You discussed the bid. Now, this is the actual contract now that we can actually sign and move forward so that we can go ahead and get them started. And of course, this does meet our Davis Bacon wage um, requirement. Because we are receiving federal funding with some of this, as well as with the, within the grant.
And they're familiar with that?
Yes, they are. They've worked with it before.
Okay, good. Alright, so um, I don't have any questions. Doesn't, do anyone else wanna ask any questions? If not, we can go ahead and make the motion to, to accept the contract.
This is Brooks, uh, no questions, and if you'll entertain a motion, I'll be happy to give one.
Okay, I see there's um, someone has their hand raised?
Yes, this is Cynthia Henderson. I just wanted to know, uh, what companies provide references, references and what was their rating?
I didn't bring that information tonight. I can get that for you and I can send it out to you if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Alright, um, at, Mr. Brooks, you, you wanted to make the motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion if nobody else has any other comments.
I don't have any.
Henderson has no comments, um, I'll second the motion. Oh, I thought, I thought you meant.
No, I said I, I'm happy to make a motion if no one else. If Julia has no comments, I'll, I'll make a motion.
No comment.
Brooks, I make a motion to move forward with SFMS uh, for the forty-third Av- Cottage City, Maryland. Stormwater Management Project in the amounts of. Three hundred and four thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents.
Henderson second.
Thank you. So, um, we'll take the vote now, starting with Ward one.
Ward one, Salsic, aye.
Ward two Henderson, aye.
Ward three Wheatley, aye. Ward four Givens is absent.
At-large Brooks, aye.
Motion passes. No nays or abstentions. Um, let's see, next up is acceptance of resignation from Cottage City employee. Mr. Holson?
Yes, we received the resignation of our police sergeant. Um, and the last day will be on the fourteenth of July.
So we have to make a motion to accept the resignation. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
Um, this is Brooks first. I would thank Sergeant Hayes for her service to Cottage City. And I also make a motion to move forward with, um, or I guess rather, accept her resignation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Henderson second.
Thank you. Call for the vote. We'll start with Ward one.
Ward one, Salsic, aye.
Ward two Henderson, aye.
Ward three Wheatley, aye. Ward four Givens is absent.
At-large Brooks, aye.
Motion still passes, no nays or abstentions. Next is a temporary employee promotion. Mr. Holson?
Yes, um, as we know, um, Chief Ayers is retiring from Cottage City. Um, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. Um, and with the changes within the department, we are going to need to elevate um, Corporal Thompson. To hopefully Sergeant Thompson to act in a capacity to assist uh, with various things within the department. Um, and so I come before you tonight to find out if we could elevate him. Within the department from, you know, Corporal Thompson to Acting Sergeant Thompson. Um, and of course, discuss, um, you know, possible increase in salary, temporary increase in salary during this time. I leave it to your discussion.
Thank you. So um, I know we discussed this at the. Close session last night. Um, and you got the numbers for the salary for us, the current salary for that position?
I did, I did. It's currently um, thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents an hour, um, and it's sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents annually.
And currently he is making?
He currently makes twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents an hour at sixty-two thousand, four dollars and eighty cents.
So we're looking at like a two dollar increase? Or something like that? I know there was um, discussion to make the increase effective immediately, um. Per our personnel manual, it says they should be in the position for at least a hundred and twenty days before they um, would receive an increase. I can um, agree to reduce that time. I would probably say thirty days versus a hundred and twenty days and not immediately. And I'm gonna explain why I have concerns about giving the increase immediately. Because um, and Commissioner Brooks, you know this to be true. Um, and not so much um, Julia and Renee, but in the past, we have. Promoted employees to temporary positions. And just recently, we did that. We were paying someone seventy-five thousand dollars. And as an acting and um, supervisor, and they did absolutely nothing the entire time for three months. We wasted money on giving someone an increase that didn't do hardly anything. So, me personally, I would like to see at least give the. Employee at least thirty days to show that they have at least done something to warrant the increase. Versus immediately given an increase. And I'm not saying that Corporal Thompson wouldn't do anything in the position. I'm just saying in general. I think you, you need to give the person at least an opportunity to see if they can step up and, and fulfill those duties. Versus just automatically giving them an increase. And they, not saying that he would. They may not do anything the entire time, because mainly it's. It's, for me, it's about being efficient and, and making sure that we're spending taxpayer dollars wisely. And I understand when people take on extra duties, they should be rewarded. But I don't, I, I just don't agree with it being effective immediately. But um, I think the other three commissioners disagreed. So if someone wants to make a motion, they're more than welcome to do so. Or wanna suggest an increased amount, because we do need to figure out how much, if we're gonna do it, and if it's gonna be effective immediately. Any other discussions?
Yeah, this is Brooks. I mean, I'm a big advocate for paying people if they're gonna do the work. I, I hear what you're saying and I agree with you. Um, that we've been burned by this a little bit in the past, and so I, I would give way to thirty days. Um, a hundred and twenty is ridiculous to me, and you're just asking for somebody to fill in for no additional money. But I would give way to the thirty-day mark. I think that's fair, you know? Show that you can do the work and, um. Yeah, and then, you know, and I also understand your point about, you know, we don't have to match the pay. He doesn't, you know, not necessarily saying that he needs to make exactly what Sergeant Hayes made, but um, you know, I, I would. I would be willing to go up to, you know, probably thirty dollars, seventy-three cents for Corporal Thompson. It's a pay increase, you know, for stepping up and, and on the intern. So, me personally, recommend agreeing to the thirty-day wait. And then um, also bumping up his pay to thirty dollars and seventy-three cents.
Thank you. Um, Ward one, Julia, any thoughts?
Um, how long was he, uh, cause we had bumped him up to be sergeant before, how long was? He in that position before?
About a month, he was in that position, in that role.
So would we be considering that to be the thirty days, like? We're bumping him up now, he already kind of did thirty days of showing that he's willing to do the work and all that kinda stuff.
I mean, you could, I mean, that would be a decision you all could make, that you already feel that he's already done the thirty days.
Yeah, so technically, we're looking at this as like a brand new thing.
Right.
It's what you negotiate.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that would be my, I think, in this specific case, I mean, I think if we're talking about. Long-term going forward, um, I would agree with the thirty days, but for this specific case, because he's already shown. I mean, he's basically already done the thirty days. Um, I would say to um, have it be effective immediately. I agree with Commissioner Brooks on the thirty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Commissioner Brooks, was it thirty seventy-five or thirty seventy-three?
Sorry, it was thirty seventy-three. It was kind of a matchup. Sergeant Hayes is thirty-one seventy-three. And I would also agree with uh, uh, Julia that, that should time serve. You know, go back to his thirty days that he already served and, and make it effective immediately. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
I really think you should at least give him at least like thirty. Or fifteen days to prove. Because uh, the past is past and. I'd rather see what's, you know? How good is a person once they step up to the plate? Cause I don't know how long, I mean, they haven't done it in. Uh, in a while, so show the product within fifteen to thirty days. And uh, I don't know about thirty, I mean, the, the amount, um. Maybe half the amount now and. If um, if, if that person becomes, you know, more permanent, then the money will go up. I always like to, um, and then, and my judgment is always make room for improvement. And after you show improvement, then, you know, you have to leave room to, so you can increase the pay later. Uh, the main thing is, I, I'd rather see some action. And then, you know, be able to ma- make a, a better decision to move up. How you about?
Madam Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Sure.
Uh, Brooks, I make a motion to move forward with. Going for thirty days, but also giving Corporal Thompson time served for his previous. for his previous 30-day temporary service and raising his pay on the interim while he's doing this temporary duty to $30.73.
Is there a second?
Salsic, second.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Ward 1?
Ward 1, Salsic, aye.
Ward 2?
Henderson, aye.
Wheatley, aye. Givens is absent.
Brooks, at-large, aye.
Motion passing. No nays or abstentions. Next is the August recess.
Usually the commission has taken a recess in August. It does allow the town staff to focus on getting things done during the month, especially for Cottage City Day planning. And it would be helpful. So I leave it to you all for discussion.
Any discussion, Ward 1?
No discussion.
Ward 2, any discussion?
Henderson, Ward 2, no discussion.
Ward 3, no discussion. Givens is absent. For Ward 4, at-large?
Yeah, something Givens often says, and he's not here this evening, is that, you know, if anybody from the public's in attendance, this doesn't mean that the commission is off. We often have special meetings. We often still have to attend Cottage City Day and all these, well, don't have to attend Cottage City Day, but we do attend Cottage City Day. So we have a lot of other things going on. It's just, this is a simple break from the Cottage City official meetings, like the work session and the town hall meeting like this evening. So it's not a break from our regular, you know, things that we have going on in town. And so, thank you.
So is there a motion going to recess for the month of August?
Brooks, I make the motion that we go into, that the Cottage City Commission go into recess in the month of August.
There's a second?
Henderson's second.
Call for the vote. Ward 1?
Ward 1, Salsic, aye.
Ward?
Ward 2, Henderson, aye.
Ward 3, Wheatley, aye. Ward 4, Givens is absent.
At-large, Brooks, aye.
Motion still passes. There were no nays or abstentions. And finally, on our agenda, we have National Night Out.
Yes, I put this on the agenda. Of course, we have always done a National Night Out event and given some of the changes. Of course, National Night Out this year will be on Tuesday, August the 5th. And the question is, do we want to partner again with Comar Manor? Or do we want to host our own event? And I'd love to hear from you all as to what you would like to have if envisioning for our National Night Out. That's why we kind of put it out there for discussion. So I do leave it in your hands for discussion and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I think under the circumstances, I don't know if it's too late for us to even try to partner with Comar Manor. We could defer it until October because October is Public Safety Night, I mean, Public Safety Month. So we could defer it until then. Hopefully, we'll have a new chief on board. Or we could try to partner with Comar Manor, but it is very last minute. And I don't know what they have planned.
Apologies. Reverend Addison did reach out the other day and I think she was saying that if we do partner together, they've got some teens that they're going to have assist us with the event. And so we definitely could partner with Comar Manor. I don't think that would be an issue. I just would love to hear from you all as to what your thoughts are. But I agree with you. I think if we do something also with Safety Night, I think that would be a good idea, especially if we do and when we bring on the new chief. I think that would be a great idea as well.
It would be a good way to introduce him to, him or her, to the community.
That is correct. I think that's a great idea.
Any thoughts, Ward 1?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear exactly what National Night Out, the Night Out is.
It is the national event that is held annually and it builds and promotes community partnerships. It allows residents to get to know their police and law enforcement officials. And it's kind of a fun atmosphere. They usually provide food. They give away prizes. They, it really is a fun night where it brings the best of the community out and it's a lot of fun to, for the kids to get to meet the officers and law enforcement officials.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think I agree based on that. Under the circumstances, we would only be able to do something if we were to partner with Comar Manor. And I also agree doing something in October would be good with the new chief.
Thank you. Ward 2?
I really, I really think we hold off and wait till the new chief come in. That would be wonderful. It'd be, I think it would be great. Because then the town would really get to know the new chief and also the goals we're moving forward. I yield that.
Thank you. I will yield the floor to at-large Commissioner Brooks. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I went to last year's, which was co-hosted with Comar Manor and it was a great event. It was, and I really, I don't know, I liked it. It's the whole idea of it. And I don't know why I hadn't been to any before that. But I think if we have the opportunity to, maybe we could reach out and just ask them. And if they don't want to, defer it. But if they are willing to and it's not overloading on the team, then I think it's a good idea to do it. But again, you have to make that assessment, John, and see, you know, are we overloaded with Cottage City Day and everything else? Is it too much? And if not, yeah, I say we co-host it with them. But if we have to punt this one and defer to another till October, then do so. But if we have the opportunity to, I think we'd be remiss not to, not to try it.
I think that's valid. If the staff, especially the police department, feel that they're up to the challenge, I'm all for doing it jointly with Comar Manor if they're willing to do it with us. But if they feel like it's too much of a lift for them, I don't think we should really try to force the staff to do it because we are short-staffed in the police department. And I don't want to overwhelm anyone feeling obligated to really, like, fill those shoes. Because as you know, when we did National Night Out in previous years, Chief was a big supporter of that and he contributed a lot. So I don't know if the skeleton crew that we have right now can step up so quickly at the last minute. I just think that's asking a lot. But if they're willing to do it, I support it.
That sounds great. I'll check with them and I'll work, talk to Comar Manor and I'll talk to our staff and we'll get a feeling on the subject and we'll go from there. And I will keep the commission apprised of what we decide to do.
We have to make a decision soon because it's next month. Keep in mind, we still have to do Cottage City Day as well.
That is correct.
And when is the next meeting for Cottage City Day?
We'll put that out hopefully tomorrow. I'll get you some date.
Yeah, we need to finalize Cottage City Day. Let's see, there's a comment in the chat. Could you please read it into the record? Are you speaking? I can't hear you.
My apologies. I didn't have the mic on. Has anyone on the board ever worked in a position to prove themselves? You should already be qualified for the recommended, recommendation for the recommended position from Yolanda Burnett.
Okay, I think that's in regard to the previous discussion. In regards to temporary promotion. And yes. Mr. Thompson has served as acting sergeant before. Let's see, public comments. So anyone who wishes to speak, they have three minutes. Please state your name, address, or organization that you represent and your topic of concern. So, does anyone have their hand raised? I don't see anyone's hand raised. I think that was the only other comments in the chat. Ms. Henderson asked her question in regards to the companies with references and their ratings. Mr. Holton said you would get that information back to her. Like the attorney said something about Estat. But I don't see any hands raised. Is there anyone in the room at the mic who would like to speak?
There is nobody in the room except for the commission and myself.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't under, I didn't realize that. Well, doesn't look like we have any hands raised, nothing in the chat. So if there are no other comments from the public, we are at the end of our agenda. And I will accept a motion to adjourn at 8:06. We will not be going into a closed session tonight. So if anyone is ready to make a motion, we can adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn at 8:06 PM. I'm sorry, this is Brooks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Henderson's second.
Thank you so much. We will now call for the vote, starting with Ward 1.
Ward 1, Salsic, aye.
Ward 2, Henderson, aye.
Ward 3, Wheatley, aye. Commissioner Givens is absent.
At-large, Brooks, aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. We are now adjourned, everyone. Good night and be safe.